Good evening. My name is Anastasia Sianow and I'm a member of the Student Leadership of Johns Creek, Class of 2022, and Chattahoochee High School senior. I would like to start this evening by kindly thanking Team Awesome and the Standard Club for making this debate possible. In addition, our Ambassador team would like to thank the Secretary of State Office for facilitating an ambassador program. Lastly, I would like to thank all the candidates for attendance this evening. Next, I would like to introduce each of our student ambassadors. First is over there Harrison Frank, Ashen Sharma, Shuruti Namaa, Tara Ramesh, Tia Ranchad, Peter Gotchak, Ava Sun, Purvi Iyer, and former ambassadors Omar Majaur and Tyra Devabakta. I would also like to thank our dignitaries for attending. Lynn Riley, President of Georgia Student Finance Commission; Tim Jeanette, President of Johns Creek Chamber; Kent Davis, President of the Rotary Club of Johns Creek; Paul Shane of the Legacy Center; John Bradbury, Candidate for Mayor; Brian Weaver, Candidate for Mayor; A. Pulli, Leadership Johns Creek Board; Wayne Bowman of the Legacy Center; and Kier, Candidate of the Johns Creek Historical Society. Prior to the debate, we allowed each of the candidates by post to pick a number between 1 and 1,000, and we assigned the question boxes from closest to furthest from that number. The opening statements will be in alphabetical order by post, and the closing statements will be in the reverse order. We have also asked the candidates for their opening statement to answer the following question, so we're all able to get to know them a little bit better. The question is: How long have you lived in Johns Creek? And what exactly have you done to contribute to Johns Creek during this time? This is how the debate will work. Tonight, we will draw a question at random from the box over there where our moderators are. For posts 1, 2, and 5, the first candidate will have 2 minutes to answer, and your opponent will have 1 minute to rebut. And the original candidate will have 1 more minute for final remarks. In posts 3, since we have 3 candidates, the first candidate prior to hearing the question will choose the candidate they would like to rebut. They will repeat this for each of the remaining candidates with the same time limits. We also have a series of lightning round questions in which the candidates will answer either with a yes or a no, and they have a green and red card in front of them that they will lift up for you to see. We kindly ask you to hold your applause until the end of the debate. And finally, I would like to ask you to silence your phones and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Our moderators today for posts 1 and 2 will be Harrison Frank; for post 3, it will be Purvi Iyer; and for post 5, it will be Tara Ramesh. Let's begin the debate with their opening statements. Candidate Lee Tucker, would you begin your opening statement? You have 2 minutes.
First of all, good evening and thank you for Student Leadership for putting this on, as well as the Standard Club for allowing us to be here tonight. And for all of you who came out tonight, because again, this means you guys are active and engaged, so we appreciate your time. For those of you who I don't know, my name is Lawana Hurt Tucker. Everybody calls me Lee, and so can you. I have been working in this community for the last 17 years. I moved here during the pandemic. I am an executive, a business executive, and I manage over 60 employees and a multimillion-dollar budget. I am the mom to the most amazing 6-year-old campaign manager whom I pay in cookies and juice boxes, by the way. As well as, I'm a Johns Creek homeowner, and I'm super excited to be your candidate for Johns Creek City Council Post Seed 1. And some of the things that I've done since I've either worked here or lived here, during the pandemic, I was able to give out 455 PPE kits for our most vulnerable communities, which I think is very important. The other thing that I did is that during the pandemic, several people, as we know, had to be laid off due to the pandemic, so I made sure I delivered groceries as well as grow kits. So that not only did we provide groceries, but we made sure that they were able to eat afterwards by providing them kits so that they can grow food right there on their countertops with nothing more than rocks, sand, and a couple seeds and some cups. The other thing, soon as I moved here, I joined my HOA, and I became our secretary. And on the weekends, every Saturday morning, we pick up trash on Old Alabama, Haynes Bridge Road, and Nesbit Ferry. The other thing that I've done is make sure that our seniors who don't have medication during the pandemic have been able to get that, because I am an executive in the pharmaceutical industry, I was able to make sure that our seniors are able to get insulin. And some of our other teenagers were able to get their asthma medication. That's something that I do on an active and regular basis. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Tunkey, would you like to begin your opening statement? You have 2 minutes.
Can everyone in the audience hear me? Good. I know you all love my accent, just making sure you can hear better. There's one person on this stage who is actively involved in the Johns Creek from 2006. That one person is currently serving on Town Center Committee, Recreation Parks Committee, Johns Creek Art Center, Art Criminal Nature Reserve. Apart from this, that one person mentors 3 to 4 small business owners every week in the North Fulton area through a small business administration affiliate. That one person previously served on Construction Board of Appeals and Chattahoochee High School Governance Council. That one person is a graduate of Leadership Johns Creek, Citizens Fire Academy, Citizens Police Academy. That one person is an Executive Board Member and treasurer for most of these organizations. He hasn't missed a meeting or single task timeline while serving on these boards. That one person is talking to you, your neighbor in Johns Creek for 21 years, who would protect the unique character of our home, Johns Creek, and prepare it for the future. I have the education, experience, knowledge, leadership skills, and community involvement to fulfill the role and responsibility of a council member and make informed decisions for this great city. Thank you, Student Leadership Johns Creek, Irene Sanders, Standard Club, and residents for giving us this platform. Thank you.
Thank you, Candidate. Candidate Singh, would you begin your opening statement? You have 2 minutes.
All right, you guys hear me? All right. My name is Rashmi Singh. First of all, I want to thank Irene Sanders, the Standard Club, and Johns Creek Student Council, Johns Creek, Student Leadership, Johns Creek for having us all here. I've lived in this community for over 4 years with my husband Anil and my youngest son Avi, who goes to Northview. As many of you, I wear many hats. I'm an HOA Board Member, I chair a landscape committee, and I work as a technology consultant. As a member of the HOA Board, or as I work in the HOA, I work with small businesses and small vendors. As a Fortune 500 company consultant, I work with large companies and I work with government agencies. I have done this for over 2 decades, and I've worked in various leadership positions. In my work, I use collaboration, teaming, decision-making, fact-based decision-making as tools for my success. Along with agile leadership, I believe that is what is needed to move the city forward. We need to make sure we are paying attention to the town center, we're supporting the Legacy Center, we are updating and maintaining our parks and wrecks, infrastructure, and we also need to make sure that we have providing training and tools and equipment to safety all departments that provide safety and security, which is police and fire and other community departments. I am running to make a difference. I am running because I now have the time to serve. I understand that we need to, I understand the need for leadership, strong effective leadership, and I'm going to bring that to the community. I'm also, I also understand communication, the need for communication, and so I'm going to give out my phone number, which is 678-333-4933. Please call me with any issues you want to discuss about the city. And don't you all call me at once.
Thank you, candidate. Candidate Skinner, you have 2 minutes for your opening statement.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you so much to Student Leadership for putting this all together. But equally important, thank you all for being here and really being engaged and caring about our community. I am Stacy Skinner, City Council Candidate for Post 2. And I often get asked, why are you running for City Council? Well, number 1, I love this city. Number 2, I have the heart of a public servant. And number 3, I want people like me to step up and start getting involved. I don't want power, I don't want control, I want to enable everybody else to get involved, volunteer, and to feel a part of the community. My husband Derek, over here shooting video tonight, we moved to Johns Creek 8 and 1/2 years ago with our 2 daughters. And ever since we moved here, I've been getting involved, volunteering at Barnwell Elementary, where at the time, my oldest was in 1st grade, and wherever they needed me, room mom, treasurer, whatever. Got involved at our church. And by 2017, I joined the Rivermont Social Committee. And by 2018 and to present, I've been an officer on the Rivermont Community Association Board of Directors, where I currently sit as Association President. And I've chaired many other committees. Communications is what I currently chair, but I've chaired Welcome, Social, Architectural. And then in February of 2020, I got appointed to the Johns Creek Board of Zoning Appeals, where we hear variance cases. So now, I'm really looking forward to serving you all. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Aramili, would you like to begin your opening statement?
Good evening, and thank you for being so concerned about Johns Creek, to be spending your evening with us. I too care about Johns Creek. I moved to this city about 5 years ago. In just under those 5 years, I voted in 27 elections. I care. I'm Western. Where did I learn this? For, in my previous life, I used to fly combat jets for military. There they teach you dedication, teamwork, and a mantra: If you find a hole, fix it. Let me give you a couple of examples. Few years ago, there was a very smart kid who scored a perfect 36 on 36 in ACT who landed in jail. In response, I started a foundation called I Rose Up. This foundation's mission is to provide a fine alternative, better options, to these high schoolers. As we speak, 80 kids have gone through this program. And one of them has joined Harvard University this fall. Next, during the home crisis of 2009, many of our neighbors lost jobs. That's the time I got rid of a lot of healthcare professionals and conducted several health fairs free. Thereafter, of course, this happened to be in Forsyth and Gwinnett County, but yes, if our neighbor's house is on fire, do you think we'll sleep better? I also serve on Johns Creek I Heart Committee. I'm also a current 2nd Lieutenant in the US Air Force. It's service, and if I find a hole, I'll fix it. Thank you, Student Leadership, for organizing this.
Thank you for your time. Candidate Little John, would you like to begin your opening statement?
Thank you so much, and good evening. And thank you to Student Leadership Johns Creek and all of those who were part of hosting tonight's candidate debate. My name is Cassandra Littlejohn, and I'm a native Georgian, raised about 100 miles southwest of Atlanta, Georgia, in the city Columbus. In 1983, I relocated here to Atlanta shortly after I began my work in community and civic outreach. I worked as a, in corporate, nonprofit, as well as small business owner. But none of those compared to my job of 12 years as a stay-at-home mom of my now 2 adult children, Ashley and David. During that time, I was also PTA and PTSA president. In 2004, I had the honor of being elected to the Cal County School Board, where I made history as the first African-American to serve that large District 9 seat. 2009, I relocated to San Antonio, Texas with my husband to join my husband Kevin, who had moved there prior, 2 years prior, for work. I survived HOA president at that time, and those of you who've been HOA president, you know exactly what I'm talking about. But I survived that, also had an opportunity to work as a political consultant, further expanding my work in the community with both government and community entities. In 2020, my husband and I purchased our home here in Johns Creek. Excited to be back in Georgia. I'm ready to go to work doing what I've done over 30, 3 decades that served. I hope to have the opportunity to represent you as your next Johns Creek City Council Post 3 representative.
Thank you, candidate.
God bless you.
Candidate Shorter, would you begin your opening statement?
Good evening, everyone. To Student Leadership, Irene Sanders, and all of you who are gathered here today. My name is Anthony Shorter. I moved to Johns Creek in 2013, a little bit over 7 and 1/2 years ago. And since I've been in Johns Creek, I've always put myself out there for the communities and, here I am, use me, give me an opportunity. For years, I've applied to work on the parks and wrecks, zoning, town center advisory, and every single year, I continually put myself out there. And I was never chosen. I was never given an opportunity. So in 2020, last year, I wrote a letter to Mayor Bachner. I said, "Mayor Bachner, I've asked consistently to put me in, coach. Here I am. I have the skills, the ability, the history." I've worked in corporate America since I was 19 years old. I worked for Walt Disney Pictures, Sony Pictures Entertainment, HBO, and now I'm the Director of Development at the Art Institute of Atlanta. I love Johns Creek. I appreciate our diverse culture. I appreciate the diversity that this here panel is presenting to you today. And all I've asked since I've been here is, "Coach, put me in. Give me an opportunity to show you and be able to contribute to what this community has given back to me." I have a heart of service, and I do that, and it's apparent, because I'm an empty nester. My youngest child is 31 years old. I'm 58 years old. I'm now raising the second generation of me, and I'm raising my nephews, because I want to be that example, that role model, to show them that we are productive members of this community, and we want to give back to this community. We want to be a part of it, just like in 2006 when they decided to take a little portion of North...
Thank you for your answer, candidate.
Thank you, sir.
For the next candidates, would you please hold the mic closer to your mouth and speak up so the people in the back can hear you? Candidate Cesare, if you would begin your opening statement, you have 2 minutes.
Hi, everybody. My name is Pablo Cesare. I'm a first-time candidate and I'm a first-generation immigrant to the US. I'm originally from Argentina. I moved here to Johns Creek 4 years ago. Like many of you, we came here because of the schools. I have 2 kids that went to Johns Creek High School, and that was one of the things that brought us here, the great level of education system here. Of course, we fell in love with this city. It's similar to where I was born, where I grew up as a kid. And we started working here, trying to make things better, day by day. I'm mature, and basically, I'm the guy that goes and after a storm finds a tree falling in the road and goes and gets a saw and cut it. So I'm here because I want to do this with all the passion and all the dedication that it serves. I think that there are a lot of things that can be done. A lot of things are great in this community, but there is still a lot of work to be done, and that's what I want to do. I want to take this city, again, with this council, with all these candidates, to the next level. I think there is a lot of room for improvement, and we are here to work as a team and be the representation of this diverse community that we have. I think we have, based on the census, we have one of the most diverse cities in Georgia, and we want to represent it, we want to represent every single community, every single group, and be there for you guys. We are just representing you. That's the work that we want to do. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, Candidate DeBiasi, would you like to begin your opening statement?
It's DeBiasi.
DeBiasi, thank you.
No relation, your wrestler. Thank you very much for Johns Creek Student Leadership and Irene Sanders. I know what it takes for all this work to put this together. Sorry about that. My name is Larry DeBiasi. I've lived in Johns Creek for 27 years with my wife Susan, my daughter Selena, and my son Christopher. Christopher, Selena have attended Medlock Bridge Elementary, River Trail, and Northview High School. As a family, we are 100% vested in Johns Creek. We have been, and we always will be. Over the years, I've served on a number of different boards. I've started with my HOA, then I moved on to Northview High School, and I sat on the football board, trying to find sponsors for the team to bridge gaps on the financial side. I also worked with the JCCA, Johns Creek Community Association. I also sat, I was appointed, and I was appointed on the Town Center Advisory Committee, the TAC. I also was appointed on the Board of BZA, excuse me, the BZA, the Board of Zoning Appeals. Thank you. The Student Leadership have coined this election perfectly. We are at the crossroads. And I say that because in normal elections, it is very simple. It's about aligning your goals with the candidates, which one sort of fits into your goals and strategy. This election is a little different. We are actually, this is about one word, and trust, and trust in every which way. Who do you trust to give your keys to? This is not an experiment. This is not a joyride. This is about making sure that people take care of the city and deliver for the next generation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Candidate DeBiasi. Now, our moderator Harrison will begin by asking Candidate Tucker her first question.
The first question that goes to Candidate Tucker is: What do you think the city's stance should be on funding dredging projects in private communities and neighborhoods?
Well, I think first off, we need to, when we're looking at dredging projects, we need to first make sure that we've talked to the city staff to see what needs to be done first and foremost. We need to look at the cost, that it's going to be, what it's going to cost. And then we also need to work with those neighborhoods to see if there's something that, financially, responsibility that they can take on on their part. But as far as that dredging responsibility goes, we need to look at and see who needs to be responsible first off, and then see what we can meet in the middle.
Thank you.
Thank you. On the, right now, current council put a framework for the stormwater to take care of in the future. I know, someone made a comment that city hasn't done anything on the stormwater, but yes, they did. In the last 2 years, things started moving. So let's address the existing one on what we already promised residents and where we are taking. On the dredging, yes, the discussions are going on. We need to sit with the city staff, discuss with the city staff, and also get the input from the residents. Come back and see what can be done and what does it cost. So at the end of the day, we got to look at the cost, how much it's costing and where it's taking. So based on the input from the city staff and the residents, we should make a decision. Thank you.
Ms. Tucker, you have 1 minute.
I think the other thing that we've done great of as a city is we've recently hired somebody for stormwater, which we didn't have that resource in the past. And now we've got dedicated people to really educate us on what we need to be doing when it comes to stormwater. We haven't had that in the past. I also think that because we have put off and put down, you know, kicked this can down the road for 15 years since the city's creation, we now have to start looking at the opportunity we have. But I think right now, there's a couple different groups out right now that are looking at what is going to cost the city overall. And we need to start looking at what needs to happen first, as well as putting in position things in place to make sure that we provide the funding needed to for stormwater. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question goes to Candidate Tunkey. 3 of the 4 fire stations in Johns Creek were inherited from Fulton County and are not situated in locations to optimally provide help to in-need citizens, and several are in dire need of repair. How would you address these critical safety needs?
You know, I went through the Citizens Fire Academy. So we go through the process of like the response time, how much the response time is. So 98% of the responses were less than 10 minutes. So right now, it's all working fine. So we just need to make sure we staff the public safety and make sure they're delivering it. So the other aspect is, the response time, it all depends upon the insurance. If the response time takes longer, the insurance premiums from the homeowners in Johns Creek it goes up. So we need to make sure that the fire stations are servicing and we're making sure that the response time is in less than 10 minutes, and we need to work on making it better. Thank you.
Candidate Tucker, you have 1 minute to respond.
I think the first thing we need to do is make sure that we engage with the fire chief to find out where the gaps are. We need to make sure that we understand where the problems are, where the hot spots are, where the response times are too long, and find out what we have. If there's a smaller unit that can be dispatched to get there on time, to decrease that response time under 10 minutes and maybe get that down to 8. But I think the first thing is making sure that everybody has a seat at the table, and that's making sure that our fire chief can give us the information that we need. Thank you.
Candidate Tunkey, 1 minute to respond.
The coordination between the different departments in the city and sitting with the fire chief and talking about like a various steps, like giving them the tools and the training and the infrastructure, the vehicle maintenance. So we need to make sure everything is being covered to get the response that we wanted so that there is a reason we all are in Johns Creek, the safety, the first responders. So we need to make sure we take care of that in the firsthand. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate. The next questions will be part of our lightning round. Now, for this, all candidates will respond. You all may stand up and hold your cards. If public health concerns warranted, would you support mask mandates in the city? Yes or no? Thank you. The next question: Do you support any sort of defunding of the police department in Johns Creek?
All candidates said no.
All candidates say no. The final question: Vaccine passports for public places?
Hold them up just for a second.
1 more second.
Sometimes the video doesn't pick it up.
Candidate Tucker responded yes. Candidate Tunkey responded no. Candidate Singh responded yes. Candidate Skinner responded no. Candidate Amorelli responded no. Candidate Littlejohn responded yes. Candidate Shorter responded yes.
Candidate Cesare responded yes.
Candidate Cesare responded yes.
Candidate DeBiasi responded no.
Thank you. That concludes our lightning round. Now to post two. The next question goes to candidate Singh. What item in our current fiscal year budget do you believe is underfunded?
Underfunded, okay? Please hold the mic close to your mouth so the people in the back can hear you.
All right, you guys hear me? Okay.
So please silence your phones.
Would you please repeat the question? Is it in current year, did you say?
The question is, what item in our current fiscal year budget do you believe is underfunded?
Okay. So I was going to answer that the town center is not funded at all, but it is not in the budget to begin with. So to answer your question then, the item that is underfunded, I would say, is sidewalks. T-Spot is coming from another source. So there are some sidewalks project, as I know where I live, they have not been given priority. And we don't have sidewalks where we live in Rogers Bridge Circle. So there's no funding for it, hence we don't have sidewalks. So I would say some essential items like sidewalks are underfunded.
Candidate Skinner, you have a one-minute response.
Thank you for the question. While I do agree with candidate Singh about sidewalks, the bigger problem is our parks. Our parks are heavily underfunded. Right now, we are losing families to Forsyth, Alpharetta, and Roswell, Gwinnett County, because they have better feeder programs. We don't have a feeder program. So we need to really put the money in our parks. Thank you.
Candidate Singh, you have a final one minute to respond.
So we have a $40 million Parks Bond, which has funded various parks, including Holly Creek. So all of this is in motion. So parks are not underfunded, only because we have spent $40 million or we have distributed this $40 million to different parks. This goes with Shecrack, Holly Creek, Bell Road, Newtown. There are different places, these funds are being distributed, and they're in different stages of construction. So as we know, Holly Creek is 192 square miles of park that is going to be starting construction in 2022. So we have made progress there, and we have distributed the funds according to this Parks Bond. Thank you.
No. Our next question goes to candidate Skinner. What specific proposals do you have to completing our strategic Parks Plan without meeting another bond? Or are you in favor of another Park Bond?
Will you repeat the beginning one more time?
Yes. What specific proposals do you have to completing our strategic Parks Plan without meeting another bond? Or are you in favor of another Parks Bond?
So I think it's up to the citizens whether we have another Parks Bond or not. But I do think that we need to put more money in our feeder program. We don't have, I know in the budget, there's $120,000. Thanks to current council, they've allocated that to hire a Parks Director to start working on a feeder program. But we need to pick up the pace on that. I mean, there's just, go to Newtown Park on the weekends. It is slammed with people. We don't have softball at every place. There's a need for softball. We don't have football fields. So the emphasis needs to be placed on that. Thank you.
Candidate Singh, you have a one-minute response.
Would you repeat the question one more time?
What specific proposals do you have to completing our strategic Parks Plan without meeting another bond? Or are you in favor of another Parks Bond?
Okay, so the Parks Bond would need to be decided, of course, by the residents of Johns Creek. However, we do have money, as I've said before, allocated to different parks. And we need to make sure that that money is spent correctly and all the projects that are associated with that fund are completed. Feeder program is an ongoing issue. This is because of the lack of fields. However, the lack of fields should be addressed by these new fields that are going to be built in Holly Creek. And then also field repair that will happen in other parks. Thank you.
Thank you. And candidate Skinner, one minute to respond.
So of our last Park Bond, I think it was $40 million, it's 90% used up. And Holly Creek isn't even near done. So we really, where that money's going to come from, I don't know. There may need to be another bond. But they are, they did put in the budget $200,000 to update the Parks and Rec Strategic Plan. And they're going to be setting up town halls and meetings all over the city to get feedback from the community to see where our needs are going. So I think that that's going to have to be reassessed at that time, whether we actually try to get a bond or not. We will get the feel of that after the strategic plan is complete. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now enter our second lightning round for all candidates to respond.
Please hold your cards up for a second so everybody can see.
The first question. Do you support the current moratorium on vape shop applications in Johns Creek? Yes or no? Candidate Tucker responds yes. Candidate Tooke responds yes. Candidate Singh responds yes. Candidate Skinner responds yes.
Candidate Aramelli responds yes. Candidate Littlejohn responds yes. Candidate Shorter responds yes. Candidate Cesare responds no. And candidate DeBisi, sorry, responds yes.
Thank you. The second question. Do you support expanding the current stormwater utility to include privately-owned property? Candidate Tucker responds no. Candidate Tooke responds no. Candidate Singh responds yes. Candidate Skinner responds no.
Candidate Aramelli responds no. Candidate Littlejohn responds yes. Candidate Shorter responds yes. Candidate Cesare responds yes. And candidate DeBisi responds yes.
The final lightning round question. Are you for a public-private partnership for the Legacy Center and the Town Center? All candidates respond yes. Thank you.
Post three. Candidate Aramelli, the first question goes to you. Before I pull a question, please choose who you would like to debate.
Anthony, he's looking at.
Candidate Aramelli, in your opinion, what can the city council specifically do to reduce traffic issues?
Okay. See, T-Spot one has gone through. T-Spot twos likely to come on our general elections. T-Spot one, T-Spot two, these are meant for bridges. Six out of 10 bridges are due for repair, intersections, safety, pedestrian walkways, and roundabouts. These are the traffic mitigation systems, which we are already familiar with. By the way, there are only three roads, which are very busy, and these are not under our control. On these lanes, that is 120, 141, and State Bridge Road, belongs to GDOT. The only thing we can do there is lanes and lights. So therefore, we are also actively considering, from the city side, whether we can do the CFI, Continuous Flow Intersection, and Michigan Use. These are something which the past city council has talked about, and I think that's a good move. They already spent about $2.5 million on the State Bridge-Medlock Bridge intersection for restriping and paving roads there. So that the, most of the time, it's the intersections which are the problem. If people do not stop there for a long time, you will have less and less congestion there. Therefore, the CFI and the Michigan Use should substantially mitigate this issue. Thank you.
If the audience would please silence their cellphones once again. Candidate Shorter, you have one minute to respond.
I agree that we've used plenty of funds with T-Spot one and two. What we did do last year is we hired an outside consultant or services. And they came in and they checked the timing of our traffic signal to ensure that we were getting our maximum timing to make sure that the traffic flow was moving at a rapid speed. I think that we need to continue to work with GDOT and establish a relationship with them in order to work with both our federal and state agencies to resolve this issue. Traffic has been an issue in Johns Creek since its inception in 2006. We just need to work our bell and our partnerships and our infrastructure.
Thank you. Candidate Aramelli, you have one minute for a closing statement.
As far as cooperating concerned, we are actually actively cooperating with Fulton County, Forsyth County, Alpharetta, and Johns Creek, especially widening the Magnus Ferry Road so traffic doesn't come from coming into south of Johns Creek on the State Bridge Road. They are trying to put $34 million there, and I believe candidate Anthony covered it rightly. The lights are also going to be a very essential measure in making sure. Another thing which I personally appreciate is, if you're coming from Coming, you've noted the speed limit is 45 there, while when you come to Johns Creek, it is 55. That means Johns Creek is thinking right. They're moving the traffic fast. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question will go to candidate Littlejohn. Before I pull a question, please choose who you would like to debate. Excellent cultural arts is always listed in professional polls in the top five answers to the question. What makes a great city? What will you do to raise the level of importance of the arts in Johns Creek?
First of all, Johns Creek already, we have a wonderful arts program that I think is really not highlighted enough. It's not funded well in our current city budget. And not to speak to the previous question, but that is an area that I feel that is underfunded. The arts is a way that I think can unify us all. It crosses boundaries. And with the proposal of the Legacy Center, I think we have a wonderful opportunity to invite the world to Johns Creek to experience what we already see here, the diversity, the, we drive into the city. We drive to, we fly to New York simply to experience the arts culture. So I think it's a beautiful expression and a way to bring communities together, to show forth our great talent as well as our diversity. Thank you.
Candidate Aramelli, you have one minute to respond.
I think there's nobody here who says that Italy is known for watches. Italy is known for Da Vinci, Michelangelo. Hopefully, this Legacy Center and Art Center, which is the number two priority on the Newtown Center, will be adequately funded. It's already been, there's a study going on, about $250,000 has been allocated to it. Hopefully, the study will tell us what is the rate of return and investment we need to make this profitable. And I also believe, at this point, these people are finding various small rooms and offices to carry on their business. I just commend their dedication. I do hope when Town Center comes, these people are having a good spot because that is going to be the focus of the Town Center. Thank you.
Candidate Littlejohn, you have one minute for a closing statement.
Thank you. I happen to agree wholeheartedly with Bob. Having met with a lot of the folks who do a wonderful job performing and providing arts here in Johns Creek, I know they are ready for us to give them some attention. And again, I think that, you know, you put your money where your mouth is. And if we truly believe the arts is important to our community, then we'll look at funding it properly. And right now, we are not properly funding arts in Johns Creek. And although people come from all around Johns Creek, other counties, to participate in what we have here, I think it would benefit us to recognize that and to place our value in our arts. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question will go to candidate Shorter. Candidate Shorter, before I pull a question, please choose who you would like to debate.
Littlejohn.
Should we have a workforce housing for those who work in Johns Creek but can't afford to live here? If yes, what steps would you take to ensure that? And no, why not?
This is a difficult question that I struggle with. Johns Creek is known for its quality of life and quality of living. While we desperately need to provide housing so that we can draw businesses back, I don't think Johns Creek is the right community for that type of situation. There's other neighboring cities that offer those type of services, and I just don't feel that Johns Creek is...
Please silence your phones.
Johns Creek is one of that shit at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Candidate Littlejohn, you have one minute to respond.
Thank you so much. Yes, I do. I think that, well, we have 80,000 residents here, close to 90 now with the new census report, living in Johns Creek. We have 170,000 people employed in the city of Johns Creek. We have firefighters and police officers and others who work in Johns Creek who can't afford to live in Johns Creek. So I do think we need to provide some type of living situation to ensure that, one, we're not fooling ourselves. Johns Creek is going to continue to grow. And as it continues to grow, we're going to continue to add labor. And we should be able to, if people want to live and not drive into the city or drive to nearby counties, then they should be able to live right here in Johns Creek, and we should afford them the housing to do so.
Thank you. Candidate Shorter, you have one minute for closing statements.
Affordable housing is a matter of opinion, right? What one might think affordable housing to me is, may not be the same as affordable housing to you. I think that the cost of living in Johns Creek allows everybody that wants to live here to be able to afford to live here. So with that being said, that's pretty much my stand on it.
Thank you. We will now have another set of lightning round questions. If all the candidates would please stand up. First question. Do you believe that sidewalks should be a priority in Johns Creek? Yes or no? All candidates responded with yes. Second question. Do you support funding the revitalization and research to create a Macedonia Memorial Garden? All candidates responded yes. Do you support any sort of defunding of the police department? Yes or no? No talking, please. All candidates responded with no. No talking, please.
For post five, candidate Cesare. How would you go about making the Johns Creek Police Department more integrated within our community?
Okay. So I have been talking to several people in the police department, including Mark. I think they are doing a great job since engaging with the community in different events, from the coffee with the police and going to different schools, engaging with kids in the community, and making plans to get to know them better. I think that is something that needed to be done, and I think they are doing a great job. I don't know if there is anything else that we can do other than keep going through the neighborhoods, keep going to events, and keep showing that they are committed to all the residents without any bias. That's basically what I think.
Please hold the mic close to your mouth and speak up.
Candidate DeBiasi, you have one minute to respond.
Thank you very much. I believe that the police can, they do a fantastic job. They're successful. They actually have won for many years the Kalia Certificate, which is 469 different criteria for our police department. So they are truly world-class police department. Can they be more integrated into our city? Absolutely, they can. Johns Creek has a problem with drugs. And if we go... And if we go ahead and have a crisis intervention center with the police department so that we can actually go ahead and use the police so that calls can come in about where drugs are being conducted, we can go ahead and try to avoid any of that before it becomes more and more of a problem. The Will to Live Foundation within Johns Creek is about teen suicide. I think we need to find a way to integrate that organization deeper into the police department to avoid teen suicide, which are a huge problem that is untalked about. Thank you.
Candidate Sisera, you have one minute for closing remarks.
Okay, so, yeah, of course, there are several things that they are, that the police force is working on. And I want to congratulate the three new police officers that just swear in this week. I think the team that is working on all those social aspects, how they are engaging with the community, I think it's a great progress that they are doing to all the community. So I really appreciate all the work that they are doing. I think we've got to keep supporting it from the city council. I think they have all the technology that they need, and they are doing a great job.
Candidate Dibiasi.
Thank you. So...
What would you propose to set our town center apart from our sister communities? Give specifics as to what the first steps should be in developing a vibrant town center.
The town center is our next big thing in Johns Creek. It is absolutely what will begin to set us apart and also give us an identity in our community. The first step in the town center, we must, we must activate the community. We must build a linear park area with trails. We must have, continue to have more and more festivals at City Hall in that area so that we can actually bring the community to the area. They become activated, and we can keep going forward with that. One of the major areas that will require funding is the Legacy Center. That, again, will set us apart. Fulton County will assist us in helping build that center. There are funds available, there are funds for private donations also that can come to the Legacy Center. The Arts will become one of the most important areas in Johns Creek, coupled with the Town Center. Thank you.
Candidate Sisera, you now have one minute to respond.
So we all, everybody here wants the Town Center, there is no doubt about that. We don't want to be in the situation that we work with developers and create all the housing around that and not being able to have the leverage to have the commercial aspect of the Town Center. We only own about 12% to 15% of the land that we want to use as the Town Center area. So I think it's a disadvantage to other cities that own probably 30% of the area. I think creating the conditions for the, all the commercial aspect, for the developers to come here and instead of going to Alpharetta or other cities, is something that we need to do first.
Candidate Dibiasi, you have one minute for closing remarks.
Yes, the Town Center will take an enormous effort by everyone in the community, specifically the Town Center Implementation Committee that will be formed here shortly as, once the Town Center plan is approved by the Planning Commission and moving forward. I believe that it will take creative thinking because there are 47 different landowners within the Town Center. Each one of those landowners have a different payback or ROI on their building or their properties. How do we engage with those individuals? How do we activate those properties to bring them into the fold of the Town Center itself? It is a mountain to climb. But with the right people and the right motivation, and I think we have this today among any one of these council members and the two mayoral candidates, I think we can get this done. We've kicked the can long enough down the road. It's time to activate a Town Center for Johns Creek to bring us like the rest of the communities around us.
Thank you for your time.
We now have a set of lightning rounds questions. All the candidates will now stand up. Should the city require COVID-19 vaccinations for all city employees with the standard exemptions? Yes or no? Candidate Tucker responds yes. Candidate Simki responds no. Candidate Singh responds yes. Candidate Skinner responds no.
Candidate Aramali responds no. Candidate Littlejohn responds yes. Candidate Shorter responds yes. Candidate Sisera responds yes. And candidate Dibiasi responds no.
Would you support garbage or recycling collection managed by the city? Yes or no?
No talking, please. Hold up only one card. Okay, then accept. Candidate Dibiasi responds yes.
Should the city inhouse all departments rather than outsource many? Yes or no?
I think candidate Aramali, please don't change your cards. Candidate Aramali responded no originally. Everybody else responded yes.
You all may sit down. Candidate Tucker, we now turn the tables and ask you to ask your opponent a question. You have one minute to do so.
What would you do to ensure that the women who work for the city have equal pay for equal work?
Candidate Tukie, you have two minutes to respond.
It is a good question. Basically, like the pay should be based on the role, responsibilities, and the qualification. So we'd come back and put in a pay structure, and everything is going to be dictated based on the pay structure. Basically, like if everyone falls in the same category, irrespective of the race, gender, they'll all get paid same. Thank you.
Candidate Tucker, you have one minute to respond.
I think the first thing we need to do is we need to pull a file to see what everybody's making. We need to make that public so that the people understand what they're being paid. I also think that because of the new laws, we need to make sure that people are aware that they have access to that and know that they have the opportunity to be paid more. Because often, we stay quiet, and we've heard it for several years in HR, "Oh, don't tell anybody what you make," but that's how women stay underpaid in this community. It's because we don't talk about what we make. And so I think we need to make sure that women have the opportunity to speak up and speak out. But we also, we need to make sure that HR is pulling that report to find out who's being paid what and where that gap is, and make sure that women are brought up to the level that they deserve. Because it's unfortunate that women make 70 cents on the dollar to a male. So I think that first and foremost, we need to make sure that any, the HR division is pulling that report so we can see where the gaps are.
Thank you, candidate Tucker. Candidate Tukie, you have the same opportunity to ask your opponent a question. You have one minute to do so.
Thank you. I have participated 17 elections in Johns Creek. Being a resident of Johns Creek, Ms. Tucker voted in Atlanta multiple times, for which Secretary of State is investigating for the voter fraud. But my question is more on the interview from August 18th on Unfiltered. You made, you displayed contempt for citizens of Johns Creek. Some comments are like, Johns Creek doesn't want sidewalks because it brings the element. And you said, everyone passing through Johns Creek is being profiled. You even said, "I want to control Johns Creek like Atlanta and South Fulton." These statements make it like...
Thank you for your answer, candidate.
Can you please explain?
Candidate Tucker, you have two minutes to respond.
Well, first of all, you're taking almost an hour interview and minimizing it because those words weren't exactly used. When we talk about the residents of Johns Creek, we were talking specifically when you're looking at who lives here and treating it like that. I was saying that when I'm out talking to residents, what they often say and that they hear is that we don't want to bring sidewalks to Johns Creek because people say that it brings the element. And I was saying that that's not true. I was saying that that's how people feel, is that that's one of the pushbacks for bringing in sidewalks. So let's be clear. And also, to your issue of voter fraud, there was no voter fraud. Last time I checked, as a Fulton County resident, you have the ability to vote anywhere early voting. Not to mention that I did everything I was supposed to do according to the Secretary of State's website. And unfortunately, if I recall correctly, last year was a pandemic. And so unfortunately, they didn't get to my voter registration information in time, but that's not my fault. So thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, candidate Tucker. Candidate Tukie, you have one minute to respond.
I can share that video on my portal, website. But if that's what you're saying, like I'll let, leave it up to the residents to make a decision on what is right and what is wrong. Again, leaving the Johns Creek, representing the district of where you live, makes a huge difference on what we're going to lead the residents of Johns Creek to and how we can address the issues that Johns Creek residents are looking for. Because I've been a resident here so long, so we understand what is happening in there. Our police department is the best. Rather than making the statements like that, we should go back and sit with the police chief and understand what they're doing. So we need to get involved in the community, work with the residents, then come back and say, you know what, this is what it is. I'm going to come here to represent you, not the Atlanta or South Fulton. I want to represent the residents of Johns Creek.
Thank you, both candidates. We will be moving to post two. Candidate Singh. You will again have, you will now have the opportunity to ask your opponent a question. You have one minute to do so.
All right. So your website mentions, "We need to ensure," quote, "we need to ensure Johns Creek remains an affluent community." We have so many wonderful people who contribute to our schools and our community. They might not be considered affluent, but may be considered working class or middle class. Why should people who are not wealthy be excluded from Johns Creek?
Candidate Skinner, you have two minutes to respond.
Thank you for the question. So the word affluent has big, big, broad meaning, and it's actually laid out in the Comprehensive Plan. So affluent to me means multifaceted, affluent safe, affluent is wealthy. We are one of the wealthiest cities in Johns Creek, and that's what makes us so great. It doesn't mean we want to discount anybody that can't afford to be here. It means, this is what we are. Come join us. We are diverse, and we are, and we do need to celebrate that, but I think you can have a good balance of both. I probably live in the cheapest house here out of all of us. I wouldn't consider myself affluent by any means. But I'm very happy to be here, and I'm grateful for what we have. And no, I don't want any steps taken backwards that would change that at all. I want our affluency to remain intact. Thank you again for the question.
Thank you, candidate Skinner. Candidate Singh, you have one minute to respond.
All right, so I have checked the Complan, right? I did check the Complan. It talks about a lot of things that we need to keep Johns Creek intact. Affluency is not one of them. It talks about diversity, it talks about arts, it talks about schools, it talks about businesses. It never mentions the word affluent. So I, you know, affluent does mean, it does mean we need to keep it affluent would mean to many people that there are certain groups of people who shouldn't be included or need to be excluded for the reason that, you know, they don't have wealth. But I did check Complan, you should probably check it again, does not mention the word affluent.
No.
30 seconds?
Nope. So, thank you, candidate Singh. Candidate Skinner, you will once again have the opportunity to ask your opponent a question. You now have one minute.
Okay, so with my one minute, I will post the affluency on my website tomorrow morning where it does mention in the 2018 Comprehensive Plan the word affluent. Candidate Singh, how do you feel about multifamily housing? Do you support multifamily housing outside of the Town Center?
Thank you, candidate Skinner.
So as we know, businesses in Johns Creek are suffering. And part of the reason they're suffering is because they don't have employees. And part of the reason they don't have employees is because people cannot find a place to live. They have long commutes, they do not want to make those commutes and come here and work. So we need to create an atmosphere, we need to give people options where they can live, work, and play in a 24-hour cycle, live, work, and play in the same place. So multifamily housing, I support it for some portion, changing zoning laws in some portion of Johns Creek. As we already know, Johns Creek is a 90% residential, 60, you know, 60 and up. Highly single-family homes or residential homes are the primary source of revenue, and that is what makes up Johns Creek. There is not that much land left to build. So what we need to do is we do need to look into zoning and look to see if there is any opportunity or land anywhere that we could utilize for multifamily homes. And again, this is, these are going to not, these are going to be smaller residence, studio, one bedroom, two bedroom, you know, not probably fit for a family, probably fit for just young professionals. So there's not going to be an emphasis, or there's not going to be crowding at schools and such. But we do need to look at options that can be available to young professionals and other people who would like to live here, work here.
Thank you, candidate Singh. Candidate Skinner, you now have one minute to respond. This will be the final response for this question.
Okay, thank you for your answer. So one of the reasons people love Johns Creek is our schools. So the more people, the more places we build, and specifically apartments, the harder it is for our schools. We don't want our students in trailers. We don't want more stormwater problems. I think it's very important, you have to be very cognizant of the fact there's nowhere in the Comprehensive Plan that calls for multifamily housing. Period. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate Skinner. We now move on to post three.
Candidate Aramali, before you pose your question, please choose who you would like to debate. Okay. We will now turn the tables and ask you to ask your opponent a question. You will have one minute.
And, Mr. Anthony, you had a wide-ranging businesses to work with, but you also say that we need to revitalize our businesses. One of the ways most cities try to revitalize their business is to invite new business based on tax incentives. Are you familiar with the current existing tax system, how they renew their taxes? And would you like to suggest some changes?
Candidate Shorter, you will now have one, two minutes to respond.
Yeah, in addition to having a full-time job, I'm also a business owner. I own a company that provides striking for the entertainment industry, couple of line solutions. So I'm very familiar. I think that the occupational tax that we charge in Johns Creek is fair, is based upon the self-use tax. And so I support businesses, the growth of businesses in Johns Creek, basically.
Candidate Aramali, you have one minute for closing statements.
Thanks for supporting the businesses. But one of the ways they do is very equitably, and this is followed by all about, all the neighboring counties where they charge a flat fee, administrative fee, and then they charge about per save, per employee, they charge $13. And then, based on the profits which they make in Johns Creek, they charge, that makes up rest of the bill. Otherwise, for professionals, it's a flat $400 bill. And I think the reason I asked this question is I just wanted people to know that we are on top of things, and Johns Creek particularly is very good at attracting businesses primarily because of this tax structure, which is a hybrid tax structure. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate Littlejohn. The next question goes to you. Please choose who you would like to debate.
Bob. I'm only doing it to be fair. Not to pick on Bob, but just to be fair.
We will now allow you to ask your opponent a question.
Bob, Johns Creek is noted as being one of the most diverse cities in the state with the 29% Asian community. How would you celebrate the diversity with not only looking at the Asian community, but all of Johns Creek's diverse... but all of Johns Creek's diversity population?
Candidate Aramali, you have two minutes to respond.
Yes, Johns Creek is an incredibly diverse city. Matter of fact, probably in whole of North Fulton, there's no city which is more diverse. About 14% to 15% are Indians, Chinese, and Koreans make up the rest of, and Hispanics are about 7,000 to 8,000, with African-Americans also contributing about 8,000 to 10,000 people. Therefore, we all come from different cultures. There are a lot of facilities here which are available to us, amphitheater which is under repair, various parks which are there, where we have outdoor festivals, where we have outdoor food festivals, cultural festivals, religious festivals, where per se, even the police people take part in it. To a previous question where how culturally sensitive people become, the police. This was one demonstration I saw personally with my eyes where the Johns Creek police was taking part in some of the religious activities which are done outside. I believe we, at this point, are fully aware. If you see the playgrounds allocation, the shake rag is completely taken up by soccer and cricket, and very little of mixtures lacrosse and NFL-type football happens. So this city is very aware of its diverse roots and culture. And I think it's right now a model city. Can it do better? Possibly, yes. And I think I would like, at the expense of diversity, I'd also like to see these multi-use fields to be used for American-style NFL fields because I noticed there's so much emphasis on culture that local culture, the American culture is also being slightly neglected. I would rather see a lot of multi-use field where NFL-style football is also happening, tag football, NFL-type football. Thank you so much.
Candidate Little John, you have one minute for closing remarks.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, you silenced me, Bob. Well, I think tonight's panel is a mirror image of our community, and me personally, I think it's beautiful. I welcome it. I hope to see Johns Creek in our, whether it be our website or whatever we do, we keep in mind that we are a unique community. But that's what makes us great. That's what makes us who we are as a community is that we do have a diverse culture, and that in itself should be celebrated in everything that we do and our representation on our boards. As Anthony mentioned earlier, he's tried for years to be appointed to several boards unsuccessfully. But I do think that in Johns Creek, if we celebrate diversity, then it should reflect in all that we do.
Thank you. The next question goes to candidate Shorter. Before I ask you your question, please choose who you would like to debate.
I'm Bob.
Please ask your opponent a question. You will have one minute.
You know, it's very important that a public official operates with physical responsibility, transparency, and ethical practices. Do you support candidates who do not operate under those standards? If yes, why? If no, why?
Candidate Aramali, you have two minutes for your response.
Thank you, Anthony. That was a wonderful question. Probably, I wish I asked it. It's a slam dunk question. The point is, we as public officials are the mirror of the society. If we seem tainted, what trust will people who voted us will have in us? Not only that, I feel if you see low turnouts in the elections, that is a direct reflection that people are not caring about who they elect. Therefore, I believe that all of us here on the stage are, if not very transparent, extremely honest, have nothing to hide, we will be good candidates, and we'll be good at serving on the council, primarily because we serve as examples. Tomorrow, when we are fortunate enough to be on the council, there are a lot of young kids who will be looking out to people like Stacy, Rashmi, or Anthony and Pablo, saying, hey, I'd like to be like that person. So therefore, it is very, very important that we have some of the finest people representing us, and it starts with integrity, loyalty towards the society, towards our city. Thank you, Anthony.
Thank you. Candidate Shorter, you may now present any closing remarks.
I have to agree with what you're saying. But leadership is important because not only are the residents of Johns Creek watching, but the world is watching. So operating with complete and total transparency is a no-brainer for me. If we have a candidate that does not operate under those standards, I would urge you to reconsider your vote. Thank you.
We will now move on to post five. Candidate Cesare, now we'll turn the tables and ask you to ask your opponent a question. You have one minute.
Okay, so yes, we are a diverse city. We all know it. The census shows that. And we are a unique city. One of the groups of the community that is usually less represented is the LGBTQ community. What would you do to support that group, and why if not?
Candidate Dibiasi, you have a two-minute response.
Thank you very much, Pablo, for the question. I believe that Johns Creek, as Cassandra mentioned, is diverse, and it needs to be embraced. Our diversity is our strength, not just in Johns Creek, but our diversity is our strength in America. Whether you're LGBT.